Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Chatham Select Board Meeting of December 19th, 2023. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing none, pursuant to Governor Healy's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public adequately accessed the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder, the persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, on Chatham TV, which is now Xfinity Channel 8 and 1070, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Quick rundown of what our agenda looks like this evening. We have approval of minutes for December 12th, 2023. We will then move on to public announcements and agenda item requests. We have a public hearing for a Change of Premise One Drop Operations LLC, Chatham Squire. Then we will have a drinking, water, testing, and pumping update for the month of November. And then we will move on to public comments on our business agenda. Our business agenda this evening consists of the following. Consider Sale of Goods on Town Property for the Chatham Girl Scouts at First Night Chatham. December Holiday Stroll, basically debrief follow-up. Our annual business license renewals for common victims and lodges, entertainment and automatic amusements, and movie theaters, and auto dealers in various classes. Then we will set the 2024 Annual Town Meeting day and time, and we will wrap up the evening with our town manager's report for the month of November. Just to note, item, let's see, item B on our business agenda, the December Holiday Stroll discussion, I'm going to allow public comment during that item. I think it's going to be better flow, once we open this up for the discussion with the select board. So if you have comments on that, please wait to that agenda item. So, let's see, we got approval of minutes for December 12th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Second. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Getting way ahead of myself tonight. All right, Rob. So roll call for establish a quorum. Select member De Castro. Present. Select member Davis. Present. Select member Dykens. Present. Select member Shell. Present. And select member Metter says aye. So we have a quorum. Now, December 12th, 2023, a motion to approve. So moved. Second. Second. Okay. Dean.
Just one edit, Mr. Chairman. On page seven, under the executive session, middle of the page where the motion, I offered the motion. Kathy, I just want to repeat the sub paragraphs A and B under that motion, because I did read those with the motion as part of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Additional editor comments? All those in favor, select member De Castro. Aye. Select member Davis. Aye. Select member Dykens. Staying. Select member Shell. Aye. And select member Metter says aye. Public announcements and agenda item request. I will start with the board.
I'm probably going to need some help with this. I've been requested to, I guess, make an agenda request. The person who made the request had been attempting to make contact with an elderly woman in town who had sort of dropped off the radar. And he asked me if I would put up on the table here this evening a request that we ask for some sort of a public notification of what he thought was a program run by either the Fire Department or the Police Department to take requests from elderly people to check on them if they don't hear from them. It's my understanding there may be such services rendered on an ad hoc basis by the Police Department, but in faith to the request, I just wanted to put that up on the table. I mean, as I said, I may need some help from Chief Anderson and/or Chief Tavano, who I know is not here this evening.
Anyone else from the board, Shereen?
It's just a public announcement. It might be a little unusual, because she wasn't a, I don't think she served on a board, but I think she do, is due recognition for her service. Eve Del Malin passed away this, this week. She was a longstanding member and former chair of the Democratic Committee in Chatham.
Well, I will follow up. As I'm, also want to announce the passing of Robert Hessler. Over the weekend, we were notified of his passing. You know, familiar face with around town, in town government. You know, he was most probably notable for his service on the zoning board of appeals from 2010 to 2020. So, in preference, or in recognition of the loss of our, our two townsfolk, just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Any public announcements or agenda item requests from our staff?
No.
No? Is there anyone from the audience in-house tonight? Is there anyone online who would make a public announcement or agenda item request?
No.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Just in connection with Mike's request.
Yes, please.
There is a program called the Reassurance Program, and the Police Chief may be, may be able to answer your question here immediately.
It, it's not really a question. The request was to put on our agenda a discussion of how we can, if there is a program, which the understanding was that it was, and by the way, it was Eve that was the person in question, and, and one way or the other, let the town know generally that such a program exists, and how you can participate.
Thank you. All right. We have our, first of all, we have a public hearing this evening. It is for Change of Premise One Drop Operations LLC, doing business as Chatham Squire, to construct a permanent outdoor seating area with tables, counter seating, and fire pit. I will ask our clerk to please read the public notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, at 5:30 PM, in a large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261, George Ryder Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform, to consider a request for a change of premise to the annual All Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License for One Drop Operating LLC, doing business as Chatham Squire, to construct a permanent outdoor seating area with tables, counter seating, and fire pit. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Signed, the Select Board.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Riley.
Good evening. Thank you, Bill Riley, on behalf of One, excuse me, One Drop, also known as the Chatham Squire. As you know, those of you occasionally visit the Squire or walk by, the, there have been tables, picnic tables out since the beginning of COVID in the back parking lot. And the, the management, Todd Hurl, who's, I think he's online with us today, wanted to, that was allowed under COVID change. So they wanted to formalize it, so they could have better accommodations for folks who enjoyed, you know, the outside aspects of service. We've been through the Historic Business District Committee and the Planning Board, who studied it exhaustively. And we did actually make a small change in the drainage situation there, to improve the drainage, the stonewall drainage. This won't result in additional seats, because they, to the extent that the seats are being used outside, they won't be used inside. So we'd ask that you approve the, the license change. It merely formalizes what's been allowed under, you know, the easing of restrictions under COVID.
All right. Thank you very much. As you mentioned, it has, it has been approved by HBDC. It has been reviewed and approved by the Planning Board. There's a list of conditions in their packet of approval. So we are the next stop in the review. Since this is a public hearing, I actually am going to open it up to the public first before we go to the board. Is there anyone from the audience? Yes.
Thank you. Didi Holt. I live on Striper Lane, which is about four, 420 feet, the way the crow flies and sound travels, from the area that these, where the Squire wants to build a permanent area in the, in the back there, in the parking lot. I have a few questions, since the, there wasn't a lot of information in your packet about the use of this particular area. Is it an overflow use, or is this going to be, you know, permanent for the duration of the time that the Squire is open? How will people, how will the number of people back there be controlled? I know that there are only so many seats, yet with a fire pit and ample area, people can have a tendency just to stand around, even though they don't have a seat. How, how will they buffer any noise from there? What are the hours of operation? Are they planning to have any, any music there? I don't believe my neighbors are aware, aware of this. Maybe they should be, but a lot of them are not here at this time of year. And I imagine that the most use of this area would be during the summertime. The neighborhood back there, you know, we're very lucky to be so close to town. And even though, I'm 400 feet, basically, from Main Street, you don't hear very much. It's a, it's still a pretty, pretty quiet area. Several years ago, you may recall, the Blue Coral Restaurant wanted to, instead of just, they wanted to have amplified music instead of the, I can't remember what they call it when it's not amplified. It's acoustic. Yeah. They had acoustic, but they wanted to upgrade to the amplified music. And this was a very big concern of the neighbors, because, you know, we're all right there. And so eventually, it was decided they must stick with acoustic, you know, and we were all very appreciative of that. I see this as sort of the same, the same issue. It's really all about noise. Our concern is that, you know, the Squire is a popular, popular bar, you know, during the summer times, on the weekends, the line of people waiting to get in goes down up the alley, you know, between the Squire and, what's it, man, Sundance. You know, that goes, goes down that way. My concern is that with this greater capacity and a fire pit, that this will be a very attractive area just to, to hang around. It won't just be overflow area. It will be intended to expand the, the Squire use permanently into this area. I hope that, I guess, the sensitivity to the, the neighbors' concerns will surely be addressed. And I would hate to see what happens in Chatham, as already happened in Harwich for the Embers, where there's an ongoing battle between Embers and the neighbors in the area, again, because of the noise. Embers does that open, open bar outside, has, it has a, you know, a fire pit, and not a whole lot of seating, but enough. And there's always a lot of standing around and a lot of noise, which, again, has upset the neighbors very much. And because this wasn't taken care of in the beginning, now the lawyers are involved, and, you know, it's just gotten very messy. I'm hoping that at this point, we can reach some kind of accommodation, and that my neighbors will have a chance to, to comment as, as they did when we, when Blue Coral was before you, to, again, a permit to have amplified music. So, again, I have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, and the application didn't answer any of them. So, you know, I'm hoping that Mr. Riley or Todd, his name is Todd, the owner, Todd, you know, can, can address those. Thank you.
Okay. Bill, would you like to respond to those now, or are you going to go get further comments?
Well, we should have further comments.
All right. Is there any additional comments from the audience in-house tonight? Are there anyone, is there anyone online who would like to make a comment?
No hands raised.
No? All right.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is that we went through the Historic Business District Commission, and those meetings were advertised, both in the Chronicle and Toa Butters. And we went through the Planning Board, and those meetings were advertised, both in the Chronicle and Toa Butters. And so, the, I disagree with DeeDee's suggestion that, you know, there's not enough notice about this. The, you know, the desire here is to have this section open, you know, along, in the same timeframe that the bar itself is open. And as a part of our Planning Board approval, to the extent we use, we have capacity out there, it, deductional capacity inside the building. And the, the, so, and there's no music to be out there. So I would think that in terms of noise, you know, the, the, you know, it wouldn't be any worse or more aggravating, I suppose, for the neighbors than it has been up until now. The number of people out there is not going to change significantly from the number of people who have been utilizing it for the past, I think, three summers. So I appreciate the concerns. I think the comparison with Embers is completely off-base, because, first of all, the people who run Embers are having a, one fight after another with the town fathers and mothers in, in Harwich about liquor license requirements. They also own the Port Restaurant. And they've been in litigation about the liquor license in the port. So the, the, so there's been no cooperation between the owners of those bars and the town. So I think the, the, sort of in-opposite comparison. Here, it's a use that's been going on for at least three summers as a result of COVID. And the, and I'm not aware of any complaints. Certainly nobody brought any complaints up at the Historic Business District meetings or the, the Planning Board. And I think the, if you've looked at our plans, there's going to be what I think is a very attractive fence, and access will be controlled as it is now. I mean, the, we went through this at some length with the Planning Board, and, and the Squire controls, you know, they have a limit of the number of people that can be on the, on the property. And when they reach that limit, they shut off access into the property, except through the front door, where the bouncers are in charge. To tell you the truth, I'm never down there that late when the, when the bouncers are running the show. But the, as I say, this, the question of the number of people was addressed. There's not going to be any music. I suppose there'll be some noise from people having fun, but other than that, I think, I think the Squire has always been a good neighbor, and they can, will continue to be.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions from the board?
Go ahead.
Shereen?
I just had one question to start. It's just a technical question, Mr. Riley. On the east side of the entryway, the alleyway that goes into the building, you've got the dining area here, and then there looks like, you know, where everybody used to go out and smoke a cigarette, and there used to be the bar, bar back area where there was empty bottles and stuff. It appears that there's now a 40-inch-high drink rail with seating. Is that, is that seating included within the plan for the dining and fire pit area? Because it's, looks like it has a new service window on that east side, and then there's--
There's a service window, and then there were 13 seats.
Yeah.
Right.
Has it been existing, or is that something new proposed?
That's new, like the rest of the--
Is that in addition to the 36 seats that are proposed for the dining, for the fire pit area?
No, those are included.
Those are inclusive to that? Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Bill. Just a couple of questions. I'm not directly familiar with the particulars of the notice requirements of either the HBDC or the Planning Board when it comes to a site plan. Are the, are the Butters formally notified as they are in the zone, on zoning board matters, or is it, do you, are you referring to the newspaper advertisements?
Well, the, I hate to display my own ignorance. All I know is that, you know, we, we submit the Butters list, and the, and the town sends out the notices. Shawna might have--
Katie, Katie would know.
Shawna doesn't know either. Okay, so--
Katie Donovan would know, I think.
For, for this hearing?
No, no. When it went before--
Planning Board.
The Planning Board and the HBDC. Katie Donovan stepping up.
Good evening. Katie Donovan, Director of Community Development. So I was just looking through our notification process. I believe if there's a public hearing, Butters are notified, but for a typical site plan, I don't believe they--
I didn't think so. Do you know, we don't know about the HBDC.
The HBDC, I don't believe they are notified.
Okay. I just, I'm not making anything out of it. I just wanted to clarify. And I will, will say that the, the packet that we got, not your, that's not your responsibility, Mr. O'Reilly, was thin, but we did add to it today. We got, we got the Planning Board decision, just for the benefit of the public, we got the Planning Board decision, and we got communications from the Health Department and the Fire Department relative to this. So we have that. And I would certainly encourage the public to take a look at the Planning Board decision, because there are seven, seven conditions there that you have agreed to. With respect to the issue of music, would you be, would your client be amenable to a restriction against music, or a limitation on the type of music as a condition of--
In the, in the outdoor area?
In the outdoor area.
Yeah. To tell you the truth, we've never discussed it. I know they have Music Inside.
Yeah.
My son is DJ Johnny Quest, so if you like to DJ, go down there, but--
Would you be required to come before us for permission to do music anyway?
I believe so. For an entertainment, we need entertainment.
Shawna's there, which we're going to, which we're going to approve tonight.
Yes, the, the licensing agent. The Squire holds an entertainment permit, but it is specific to indoor entertainment. It would require a public hearing for the board to make any changes to that.
So music is not an issue?
No.
And one, one of the conditions of the, of the Planning Board is that you have to go back to them in a year for review, although it's limited to pedestrian and vehicular safety.
We were very concerned that, because there's going to be an entrance with a, like a hostess on the west side, just behind the building, so close to the, that driveway. And the, they were very concerned about people trying to get in there when the front door has a line, or to have people trying to get in that access lining up in the driveway. And the, we told them that, as I said earlier, once the Squire is full, their, their total capacity, the only access is through the front door. So they shut off the side access, so there won't be any ability to enter this area, once they've reached their capacity. So that's the principal reason, at least that was my understanding, the principal reason why they wanted to review the safety aspects of that driveway.
The Fire Department wants to keep that alleyway clear.
Right. Because, you know, it's amazing. It's been there a long time, and I'm not aware of any pedestrian fatalities in that area, so--
Well, I think they want to get a, be able to get a vehicle up there of some kind.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I understand that, but we've--
No, no, I understand.
Yeah.
I would assume that in the event of some, in the case of some bad event inside, inside the building, the side door would be open, so people could exit. We--
I think, I think they have, I think they have a bar you can push to get out.
Yeah. We, we don't want to have a recurrence of something that happened many years ago up in Boston.
Boston. Talking of growth.
The, how will the, you're limited to 307 seats. That's been approved. So, I think, is that right?
I think it's 371.
But, okay, that's right.
Total capacity, outstanding.
So you're going to take some seats from inside, and then go outside. And obviously, there's a certain number of people that don't sit down. There are the serving staff, people waiting for a table, that sort of thing. So I guess I'm just wondering how-- So I guess I'm just wondering how, and this applies to any restaurant, I guess, how you go about managing the crowds so that it's not overwhelming inside the premises in particular, or even outside.
Well, I mean, they're aware of the number of patrons who are in the building. And if the outdoor seats are going to be available, a certain number of seats inside won't be available. So, I mean, historically, they've controlled the numbers, as far as I know, without complaint. You know, and again, they've had this outdoor space now for several years, so.
We've approved it in the past.
Right. And so they're going to continue the same process in which they monitor the number of people inside the building. And now that they have a fence around this back area, which will make that area easier to control as well.
The Fire Chief, and I assume you're aware of this, expressed the request that the fire pit be situated at least 10 feet from the building. That's not a problem, is it?
No, it's not.
And can't be located under tents or umbrellas. That's not a problem either.
No, it's not.
Just one last question, because you indicated in the last three years, there haven't been any complaints. And I see the police chief in the back. Has your department received any complaints about the outdoor seating in the past three years, Chief?
I can't think of any off the top of my head, and that would mean it would probably be minimal. Nothing that jumps out at me.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Mike.
So I'm familiar with holiday ugly sweater contests. I wasn't aware that there are holiday ugly tie contests.
Oh, not just a minute.
You're the winner.
This is my Christmas tie. It's from Children Laura, age eight. Here Comes Santa Claus.
If I'd known, I'd have worn mine. It may be ugly. So, anyway, I have just one question. I did sit through, I'm pretty sure, all of the Planning Board reviews of the site plan. And I think you were in front of the Planning Board three times, if I recall correctly.
Seems like more, but.
Yeah, well, I remember some of your humorous comments to that effect. The one thing that I walked away from that, those meetings, being still a little confused by is the question that Dean was focused on, and that is the, let me refer you to page, oh, it's identified as page one of the amendment application, which I'll get to it here in a second. Sorry. It's called alteration of premises, and it says proposed description of premises. There is only one floor. The total seating is 307, with 120 seats in the dining room, 151 in the tavern, and 36 seats outdoors. The indoor capacity is 371. It was never clear to me, and my understanding, I think it was clear, that the total limit of people in the entire building was, if I recall correctly, 307?
371. The total seating is 307.
Okay. And the question was, how did you manage the, in sort of in a detailed or granular way controlling the reduction inside from the number of people that were in the back?
My understanding, and if Todd's online, he can correct me, but my understanding is that they intended to do that by removing seats or covering seats inside the building.
So you would start with the 36 in the back, and they would somehow be there before you had filled the front? And therefore, you'd have to reduce the front? Is that how that would work?
I imagine, my own thought process would be.
If you can hear me.
Yeah, go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, we'd have 36 in the back, and the balance would be in the front. So it wouldn't be like a, you know, we wouldn't change it on a real-time basis. We'd have the 36 in the back, and then we'd have the balance in the front, you know, inside the building. For a total of 307.
So if you would basically, if you're going to have the back open, you would reduce the availability in the front from the get-go?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
This is kind of like a similar concept to when you guys, and we used to have the pool table. You know, the pool table was set up. When the pool table was gone, you'd have more seats or tables to accommodate. So it'd be that kind of like model of moving things around to accommodate your capacity.
Right.
Okay.
Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas, Bill. Good to see you.
Merry Christmas.
Listen, on that same page that Mike was referring to and that Dean had addressed earlier, the math here is incorrect. The indoor capacity is actually 271 with 36 outdoors, and that gives you your 307 in total. So you're going to be limited to 36 outside and 271 inside. And once we get the math right, I just, my concern about both inside and out is who monitors it? And who really watches what the numbers are so that we aren't, you know, above the numbers? I can imagine with a fire pit and those outdoor seats, and, you know, we all love the Squire, but with the outdoor seats and the fire pit, it's going to be a very, very popular spot, June, July, August, September, October. Very popular. So who's monitoring the back and forth of people, and how many people we got cooking there?
Well, the Squire has had limits on the number of people who can use the facility at any one time forever. As far as I know, you know, they've done a competent job managing those numbers. So I don't, I guess I'm, you know, why would you think that after all these years of managing those numbers that they wouldn't be able to manage them now with an additional 36 seats?
Actually, I'm going to step in. I believe Chief Chivano is online. Maybe he can kind of add some input to this part of the conversation.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everybody. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. Most of the times that they'd be kind of at the capacity that I think people are concerned about is when the facility is operating mostly as a bar and not necessarily a restaurant. And as part of the requirement, some of the fire code, bars and nightclubs and discotheques are required to have what's called a crowd manager. And they have to participate in training every three years. So that's for facilities with a capacity of 100 and more. And anytime that the capacity reaches 250 or more, it triggers the need for an additional crowd manager. The Squire's always done a really good job, even at the busiest times of maintaining the crowd.
Thank you, Chief.
Super, Chief. Thank you very much. Bill, thank you as well. We have precedent in town for outdoor seating and dining, that's for sure. We have it at the Wayside, and we have it elsewhere, so no issue there. I'm just concerned about numbers and crowd control, if you will. It's going to be very, very popular. The fact that the Planning Board has seven conditions and have studied this exhaustively, I think, gives me comfort as well, so. But I think the fact that also Planning Board is going to look at it in a year is a good thing, too. And that we can monitor the activities going forward as well, so.
Right.
So I guess I'm going to go in favor. Thank you.
All right, so we addressed Shawna. Sorry.
Thank you. I just, just to, I need to clarify a couple of things.
We did go, Shawna corrected me several times on the numbers, so I'm pretty sure the numbers that are in there are correct.
So seating capacity is 307 total. What would be listed on the license is 120 seats in the dining room and 151 seats in the tavern. That's not a flexible number. If there's only 30 people outside, it's not that they can add six seats inside. So those seat numbers are fixed. The 371 is an occupancy number, not a seating number, so that includes staff, the cooks, the waitresses, the waitstaff, the bartenders, et cetera. So that's the capacity number. One other clarification I would ask from the board is the third order of condition from the Planning Board sets closing times of the outdoor dining. Unless otherwise changed through a separate licensing process, this would be that separate licensing process. So the board can condition the outdoor dining to close at 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, or any time that you choose.
Well, I can tell you that we prefer to have the same number of hours outside as we have inside. It's very important to the Squire management. You know, it's an economic issue for them. And, I mean, with all due respect to the Planning Board, you know, this is, oh, this is a good idea. But, you know, their expertise is in parking lots, traffic, and the like. And I think that's certainly well-meaning, but it's harmful to the economic side of the Squire operation. So the, what, you know, we have to come back for a review with the Planning Board in a year in any event. So what we'd like to do is allow the same hours outside as we have inside. And then we come back for our review in a year. If there's been a problem, it can be addressed at that time. Again, there was no limit, as far as I know, on the use of the outdoor space for the past three years. So I think it was unfair, considering the investment that the Squire is making. If you've seen the plans, it's really a very handsome plan. It's really a very nice addition to the socializing here in town. So we'd like to be able to keep the same hours, which is 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
Just for clarification, Bill, the one-year follow-up with the Planning Board is kind of has a narrow scope of what they're going to look at. It doesn't necessarily going to discuss the hours of operation.
No, I understand that. And the, but we are going to be coming back for, I think, I'll be willing to bet it's a little more general than that. And, you know, when we come up for renewal for our liquor license a year from now, you could consider imposing a limit at that time. But we think since there has been no problem up until now, and the hours have been the same up until now, we should be allowed to continue, considering the really substantial investment that the Squire is making here.
All right. Dean.
Shawna, what are the hours currently?
On the Squire's license, they are permitted to operate indoors until one. Temporary outdoor dining was limited to 10:00 and 11:00 PM, as noted in the Planning Board's conditions.
So the Planning Board condition is the same as, in terms of hours, is the same as what they've been operating with for the last three years?
As are set by the Board's temporary outdoor dining.
Okay.
Yep.
So that wouldn't be a change, Bill?
Well, the thing that's a change is the investment that the Squire is making. You know, $100,000 to make these changes, you know, and they feel that if they can't continue to operate, if they can't have the same hours, that it's a much more difficult economic decision for them to make.
Shawna, do you know what the hours are for the outdoor serving at the Wayside Inn?
Wayside, I don't have their license in front of me. I don't believe there's any restriction on their outdoor dining. As far as I know, it's the Red Nun's outdoor patio that's restricted to 10:00 PM. I think that's the only one that has a restriction.
What about Chatham Bar Zen?
Okay.
What does that mean? Does that mean they have no restriction, or they, Chatham Bar's Inn?
Chatham Bar's Inn license does not have any restriction as on their outdoor dining specifically.
So they can be open until any hour they choose?
Regular operating hours until 1:00 PM, I mean, 1:00 AM, excuse me.
Okay.
Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Matters. The only misgiving I have about the one, I understand the rationale by going to 1:00 AM, Bill. I understand Mr. Hall would probably like that. But the Squire is situated, where it's located is sensitive. It's more sensitive than either the Wayside or the Nun or Chatham Bar Zen. It's really, as Didi noted, it's really very close to some residences down there. So I think, you know, 11:00 on the weekends is generous, to be honest with you. I can imagine, and I'm fairly liberal with my perspective, but I can imagine on the weekends, especially in the summer, that it's going to get loud. So I think as kind of fiduciaries of the noise, if you will, 11:00 on the weekends is probably where I'm going to go with it. So I'm probably not going to change to 1:00, Bill, and Todd. Thanks.
Okay. Additional comments or thoughts from the board? Mike.
Do you have anything to say about the diff, well, have you experienced difficulty with closing the back before the front is closed? Does that present any logistical complication?
That'd be a question for Todd. Todd?
Can you repeat the question?
The question is whether you've experienced difficulties closing the back before the front is closed in any way.
No. No, it's, you know, people are going to spill into the parking lot in the back regardless. You know, and, you know, and so, you know, whether we can, you know, it's not going to make any difference in, quite frankly, it might make a better difference having people inside the fence line closer to the building, not out in the parking lot. But it's, you know, if we can't operate the patio, you know, in tandem with the inside, it starts to chisel away, and, you know, it's just not worth the expense. We really want to clean up the back of the building for ourselves, and it's going to have a halo effect on the town as well because it's, the back of the building isn't the best-looking, you know, back of the building. And this will kind of encapsulate it. It'll have a nice fence line. It'll clean it up. It'll be much smaller than the current patio. So it won't go as far out in the parking lot. We're giving the 12 parking spots back to the, you know, community. And so it'll just be inside those 12. And it will be a nice, I think, corral for crowd control, for safety purposes, and just for operating safely. But, you know, the flip side is we have to operate, we have to be able to do it safely, but within our operating hours. And at some point, the project just doesn't become worth doing. And it's expensive to do. And it's, I believe that we've moved a lot to accommodate requests from the town to make it a palatable situation for everybody. And I think if you look at the plans, you study the plans, you'll think that, you know, that it's a good, this is a good thing, it's a thoughtful plan, and we've gone round and round on it. But now for us to go forward and build with it and not be operated within our operating hours is, you know, difficult. You know, we're, you know, we, it's just difficult for us to move ahead.
Well, thanks, Todd. But I think the important thing for you to consider is, first of all, it's not forever. Licenses renew it every year. It does represent a very significant economic cost to the applicant. It will make the back of the building much more attractive, which I think is an advantage. And if it's a problem, you know, after one year, you have the ability to cut the hours back.
Can I just ask one question for clarification purposes? Because there were hours of operation limitations imposed by the Planning Board during this recent process. So I did not sit on the meeting. I don't know if, I mean, if you recall. So what kind of conversation was occurring during the Planning Board review? Because. Because there, obviously, you, it was two or three meetings for the planning board. Just was the same sentiment expressed by the owner?
Yes, yeah, we said the same thing to them. I mean, it was...
Yeah, we would defer to the select board, essentially.
Well, it's, I mean, it's the select board's license, not the planning board's license.
Exactly.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, a couple things. First of all, I, my recollection, for what it's worth, and, and the place to go is either the tape or, or the minutes, but my recollection was that this came up rather late, and was more or less something that didn't get a lot of discussion, but was clearly not welcomed by the, the applicant. I, I guess, sort of in the line that, that Jeff was going, I, I, well, let me ask one quick question. When specifically do we get our next shot at this license?
Next year.
Well, but next year, when?
We just approved, I think, didn't we just approve it last week?
Annual liquor licenses are renewed in November with approval by the board in December. I just would point out that the renewal process is, is straightforward. It wouldn't amend the license. The applicant would need to either submit an application to amend their hours of operation, or the board would have to call a public hearing to make that change. It wouldn't be within the renewal process itself.
But, I mean, but we would have the ability to have another look at this decision in a year, one way or the other?
If there are complaints or issues that arise, there has to be cause to call, to, for the board to seek to amend the license, rather than the applicant seeking to amend the license.
In other words, if there are complaints, you have a cause. If there are no complaints...
Because if you don't have complaints, you don't have any reason to amend it. Well, I, where I was headed was, was to say apropos what Jeff, I, I, I would sort of like to meet the, the applicant at least halfway, and I, I, I don't have any particular wisdom as to where that is, but I would be inclined to say, maybe the answer is midnight, and let's look at this in a year, however we do it, and if there's a problem, we'll, we'll find a way to fix it.
Dean?
I wanted to ask Shauna, what if we...
Shauna's getting a lot of exercise tonight.
The, the planning board said Sunday through Thursday, 10:00, Friday, Saturday, and federal holidays, 11:00, 11:00, unless the licensing authority does something different.
Correct.
So if we do nothing, and we just approve the, the plan, what does that mean in terms of what the hours are? Or do we have to specify what the hours are?
If, if you do not change the, the hours through this separate licensing process, these conditions would be imposed from the planning board.
The planning board would govern.
Yes.
If we're silent on that tonight?
Right.
The planning board hours would govern. If we wanted to amend that, can we do that tonight?
Yes.
Or do we have to have a separate public hearing?
This is the, this is the separate licensing process.
This is the public hearing.
Is the change of, of their alcohol license on a permanent basis.
Okay. Well, I guess I, I, you know, I'm sympathetic to wanting to grant the application. I, I do think anybody that walks through that area and has walked through that area in the last three summers can conclude that it would look a lot nicer, could look a lot nicer, and I think that's the intent of the applicant. I do have some concerns about, as Jeff was saying, the, the proximity that this, this particular establishment has to, to neighbors. So I don't know, you know, where to come down on it. Mike is suggesting a kind of a midpoint. I don't know whether that works or not. I'm anxious to hear if any other board member has anything to say about it, or anybody else has anything to say about it, if you weren't deciding. Thank you.
I'll weigh in, Dean. I particularly am concerned about Didi's concerns about the, the noise and, and the proximity that you had mentioned. And I think that as much as we can go ahead and change this, and then maybe amend it going forward, and in another year, we can do the same thing. We can approve it as stands, and then look at it again in another year, and see if there's any issues, and make that consideration to expand the hours at that point. I'd prefer to do it that way. I think it would, it would be, it would go a long way with the neighborhood. And I really believe that if they're operating the way they are now, and, and, and have been successful at it, that they will be going forward as stands.
Okay. Final thoughts? Do we have enough information? Does anyone ask any more questions? Are we comfortable moving forward with the recommendation, or our decision, actually?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, I appreciate, you know, the comments. I understand that they're based on a, a general concern about the neighbors. I would only ask that you balance the investment, the improvement in the property, which benefits the neighbors also. And, and one of the changes they're making, they're taking all the empty beer bottles and beer cans and barrels and stuff, and they're enclosing them so that that wonderful smell when you walk by will now be enclosed. I mean, they're making a major expense to, to improve the situation there. And, and the, you know, well, not perfect. I think the suggestion of a midnight closing is really fair. And we'll, you know, and then if there are complaints, then you change it a year from now. The, I think, you know, that if you go with the, the time we have now, oh, there are no complaints, well, why do you want to change it then? You know, there haven't been any complaints up till now either. So we're asking, you know, for a very short leash to try something a little bit later. And I think that's a fair request, considering the investment and the improvement in the situation there at the back of the Squire. So I'd ask you to reconsider.
Well, thank you very much, Bill. Anyone?
And I would just weigh in, Bill. I, I, let me just weigh in just before you guys go.
Go ahead, Todd.
I, you know, I, I'd move forward at midnight. But, you know, you guys have the ultimate trump card here, which is every year you get to look at us, you get to inspect us, make sure everything's in compliance. We haven't made any mistakes over the past year. You know, we've been good stewards of the Squire. You have the ultimate trump card every year. Shut us down if you want, and do anything you want. Right? If we move forward with, you know, compromised situation, we don't have anything down the road. We can, we, I guess we can, we can clamor in a year when we haven't done anything wrong, but we all know that precedent will stand. And I don't want to build the patio under that precedent. I just don't. It's not fair. This is how we make our, our, you know, living. And so, you know, we haven't had, if we had a slew of complaints up until this point, it'd be one thing. If we're asking for an outdoor entertainment license, it'd be another thing. But all we're asking for is a small patio to kind of encapsulate the back of the, of the Squire, and make it better. And it's not going to be worth it, really, for us, period, but we want to do it because we want to make the Squire a better, better facility, and it's going to be an improvement to the town. But we can't make improvements if our hands are tied, and we can't operate them, you know, during our operating hours, particularly in light of the fact that we haven't had any issues with a much larger patio for three years.
All right, thank you, Todd.
So, you know, that's it, yep.
Mike?
Yeah, I, I, this is painful, but I think the, the applicant's entitled to a vote on the midnight offer, and, and if we can't, I, I, I don't feel that the board is necessarily there, but I think we, we at least owe them a motion on that, and, and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass.
Just, just for pure clarification or clarity, are we suggesting that back area be cleared, completely cleared at midnight? Or are we talking about no service at midnight, and then patrons are finished?
It's no service. It's no service.
I'm actually asking the board. Todd, Todd, hold on, I'm asking the board right now.
Todd, wait a minute.
So I'm...
I, I just don't see in the application where they're requesting a change of hours. I don't see it anywhere here in, in the application. It's almost like it came up after the fact.
Well, it did.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we needed the other approvals before we could file the application.
So, I mean, I, I do have a question, just to follow up briefly. The service window that's on the alleyway there, that, that, that's open till midnight. I mean, we are serving till midnight, right, Todd?
Right. We would be serving, we, we, it would be the same, so the premises on the inside would be the same as the outside until midnight. And then at midnight, no more serving on the outside, no more drinks on the outside. Right, so everybody stays inside. You can still serve until, we serve until about 12:30 on the inside, but no drinks come into the, would be coming into the patio after midnight. You can still have people out there, as always. You can still have people in the parking lot beyond that. But you can't have any drinks out on the patio.
Todd, I have a follow-up. This is Jeff. Now, listen, if, if we weren't, weren't to approve till midnight, you're saying you wouldn't do the project? But you've gone through all the pains of going through HBDC and planning board, now you have hours 10 till, you know, Tuesday through Thursday, whatever, Monday through Thursday, and Friday, Saturday, you've got till 11. You can live with that. But now you're saying you're going to knock into the project if you don't get that hour? Or two hours? On the weekend?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you think about it, like, so right now, I mean, we, we put up a small patio, you know, it probably cost us $5,000 to put up the current patio. It was a gift, you know, we, we were shut down during COVID, right? Restaurants were bleeding, right? And so the, so, you know, the governor gave us the gift of operating on our own land, and you limited it to 10 to 11, right? But it was a gift, right? And we didn't have to put any money down. So now we have to actually invest into the new project. Right? So we, we need to be, it needs to have, it needs to make some level of, it needs to make business sense.
I think, Todd, you can correct me, but I'm pretty sure Todd was willing to accept the compromise proposal that Mr. Shell mentioned, closing at midnight.
Is that every day, or just the weekends?
Every day.
Well, we'd want it to be every day.
All right, I'm assuming someone from the public does have, if you could actually go up to the podium, please.
Jeannie Branson from 17th Striper Lane, which is also very, very close to the Squire. We've been long patrons of the Squire, and we appreciate it very much. But it's interesting, where we live, there are several locations that have weddings in the summer, and one of them is across the pond. And the sound carries quite a bit over the pond, and I can't tell you how many times during the summer we're counting down the minutes to 10:00, when they will stop the music, and stop all the loud noise and, and just, and talking, because it, it is very loud, and you can't really sit and enjoy a quiet evening in your backyard with that wedding music going on. And so 10:00 is a really, it's, it's a really critical time. And if we were to, you know, have that same thing going on, I know there's no music, but you will hear voices, and there will be more people out there because of the standing room capacity. You know, just the additional voices out there. I'm just a little worried that by expanding it from 10 and 11 to midnight, that it just might be really disturbing for the neighbors. Thank you.
All right, we're going to, we at least have to make a motion, whether it passes or not, we'll be up for debate, but...
We have to close the hearing first, don't we?
We will close the hearing. If we're, if are we, do we have any additional questions, or any thoughts that we want to put out there? I mean, Squire has been around for quite some time, you know, may have frequented it once or twice. You know, I do, I, I, I'm struggling with this one, because, you know, we, frankly, in the summertime, this is, I think the summertime is going to be the biggest pocket of time where we're going to have the concerns rise of noise and, of noise. And I don't think a lot of people are going to be going to the bar probably until 10:00 or 11:00, because they're going to get off of work, whatever. So I try to struggle with understanding what the owner wants as a business model for the investment, but being very sympathetic to how that's going to impact the neighborhood. And, and, and these are, these are budding heads in my mind. So it's, this is not an easy task for, for, at least for me, because the reality of it is, you know, it's gonna, it has the potential to be very successful, because outdoor seating in the summer is ideal. You throw the fire pit out there, I think it's going to be a great draw. But I don't want to get, you know, I don't want to get into situations like Harwich or anything other town, like, I, I want to keep a friendly relationship with all our local businesses, including the Squire, so I'm kind of struggling with this one.
I have one more question, because I'm, I'm a little, and I want to, I'm not beating the hour thing down, I'm just going to put that on hold. I do have a question about the capacity, you know, issue. It says that the indoor capacity is 371. So what's the outdoor capacity? The 30, 36? Just 36 people?
Seating, is it seating?
Seating.
Outside the, I mean, someone can clarify this, the technical...
Maybe Katie can clarify that.
Outside of the structural, you know, parameters of the building.
Yeah, well, I want to make...
It's actually a Tavano question.
Or Tavano questioned, Chief's question.
Sure. The, the outdoor capacity has not been determined by the building commissioner at this point, so that would be something we could have the building commissioner look at. It would be based on, you know, the number of seats are there, but then the, the amount of standing room would be taken into consideration for the amount of outdoor, again, for the, for the standing capacity for the outdoor area. So at this point in time, I don't believe that that has been determined, though, the indoor occupancy, or the, the overall occupancy for the indoor is the 371.
Does that decision get ma, excuse me, does that decision get made when the building permit is applied for?
That's typically when he would take a look at, I guess, but it is outdoors, so it may be looked at a little differently.
And I see Chief's on.
Chief Tavano, yep.
Yeah, Katie took the words right out of my mouth. It would be more of a, a question for the building commissioner to determine that occupancy load.
Thank you.
All right, are we prepared to close the public hearing? Are we not prepared to close the public hearing?
I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Matters says aye, so the public hearing is closed. Deliberation, thoughts?
I, I just have one, one thought. I'm very much in favor of the project, I think it makes a lot of sense, I think it'll hit a home run. I just can't support the later hours. I think the hours now are prudent, and if we, they're really struggling to expand the hours going forward, then we expand the hours going forward. But I think in sensitive, to be sensitive to the neighbors, and to be sensitive to the location of the Squire. Icon and Chatham, love the business, great place, lots of fun there. I just can't have them outside late at night on, on the weekends. I think, I think it's unfair to the neighbors, that's all. Otherwise, totally supportive. Thanks.
All right. You want to entertain a motion, then? Mike?
I'll, I'll move to approve the application with the amendment of the, number three of the conditions to extend the closing for the outdoor portion of the, of, of the Squire to midnight, Sunday through Monday.
Do I hear a second?
Is that Friday through Sunday?
It, it's all seven days.
Friday, Saturday, oh, all seven, oh, all seven days, okay, thank you.
I'll second it, so we can have a vote.
Okay, further discussion? All right, all those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
No.
Select Board Member Davis?
No.
Select Board Member Dykens?
No.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
No. All right. Does it not pass?
Mr. Chairman?
Do you want to, yes?
I would like to propose that we approve the permanent outdoor seating area as described with the same operating hours as the planning board suggested, Sunday through Thursday, close by 10:00, Friday, Saturday, and federal holidays, and require to close by 11:00.
All right, do you have a second for that? Further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And the chair will say aye. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next, drinking water and pumping update for November. We have our Director of DPW, Rob Failey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I promise I'll be brief. So just want to give you an update on where we are with Training Field Wells 5 and 8. Temporary treatment facility, it's shut down for the winter. The GAC tank has been drained fully and plumbing's been winterized for the permanent treatment facility. We've begun the pre-qualification process. We're gonna advertise, well, we have advertised for pre-qualification packages in the central register that went out on December 14th. And contractor submittals for qualifications are due January 18th. We expect probably 60 to 80 packages for general contractors and subbiters. We anticipate going out to bid on around February 15th. Sorry, I don't have any fancy pictures of wells 10 and 11 this month. Really, nothing's changed from the appearance. The big news we have is that ever-source connected permanent power. That's allowing us to tech a lot of our systems, a lot of our chemical feeds. We're programming it into the town SCADA system and we're scheduling mass DEP inspections. So we are hopeful that we have an early February activation of those wells. Operations report for November for pumping. We did not hit the low-level alarm in November and we were pumping between 3 and 6 hours per day. As you can see on the chart, as compared to November of 2022, we are pretty much, other than daily fluctuations, we're right on the money. It's a, you know, 1.2% comparison. So we are very similar to last November. And that's also reflected in the bar chart and the graph comparison as well. Also in your agenda packet, the November pumping report for each well. Well 5 was shut down for the month and well 4, we shut down on November 14th. Just to give it a rest, I know we had some issues with chemicals appearing in that well previously. It's been testing healthy ever since and we don't want to, we want to give it a rest to give it time to kind of the watershed, to kind of just reabsorb and get some rest. So the table below that also shows in more detail what the bar chart at the bottom of the page reflects also. And then the five-year comparison for the month of November. I noted well 4 is offline for November, but it really was online for half the month. But our usage is really about average over the past five years. Nothing out of the ordinary. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, Rob. Questions or comments from the board? Jeff?
Yeah, we didn't have any fancy pictures of wells 10 and 11, but I understand there's a special edition of YouTube that you can watch and enjoy a tour.
Yes, Deputy Director Tom Barr did an excellent job touring the facility.
I highly recommend it.
All right, anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next, public comments on our business agenda. And to note, everything exclude, except the item B, December holiday stroll, which are all public comment during that agenda discussion. So is there any public comment on the, tonight's business agenda from the in-house public? Is there anyone online?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Ms. Gibbs.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is regarding the agenda item on the town manager's report. Through June of 2023, there was always a section on natural resources and it was specifically wastewater project data. And in that, it listed each of the phases that were being worked on. And it would include the number of properties that had been connected to the sewer, the properties where the infrastructure had been laid, and the amount, the number of notices going out for connection, and, and then phases that were in process. And that hasn't been included in any of the reports since. And this was Bob Duncanson, who'd been doing this for years. And this is the only place where you can find that data. And it's kind of important because it, it tells us how far we're coming in the different phases. So I would ask that, moving forward, this be reinstituted so that we can have this data because it's not anywhere, collected anywhere else in, on the website, under natural resources, in the wastewater comprehensive plan. So if you look at the June 2023 report, Town Manager's Report, you would see the format. And I hope you will go back to doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Any additional comments online? No.
No.
All right. Moving on to our regular business agenda, thank you very much for your patience. Item A, consider sale of goods on town property. Chatham Girl Scouts at First Night Chatham. Girls, you just want to go right up to the podium? Yep. How are you all tonight?
Good.
We don't bite. Don't trust us. You, you introduce yourself and then tell the board why, why you're sitting here tonight.
My name is Cara and we would like to sell Girl Scout cookies on, at First Night.
Okay, where would you like to sell them?
My name is Amelia and we would like to sell Girl Scout cookies downtown at the community center.
And possibly the elementary school, is that also correct?
We have not secured permission for the elementary school this year. Not the elementary school, sorry. So we did speak to the.
Actually, we spoke, maybe I'll have you go up to the podium behind you because we need to pick you up on the microphone, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Maria McKnevej and we did secure permission from the First Night Committee. They actually suggested the location we're proposing for the table. And it's at the community center front lawn on the side of the building, not blocking any traffic.
Okay, and, but in our packet, I got the impression that we had secured the elementary school also?
I had spoken, excuse me, I had gotten a call from Leah from the school department who said that they were fine with it if it was approved by the Selective, I don't know if.
Correct. We did get approval from the middle school. However, the First Night Committee feels strongly that since that hasn't been approved within their plans with the fire department and the police department, that that location is not available at the moment, so.
Okay, the information in our packet, how I interpreted it, is that there were some concerns about inside operations at the community building because First Night had already had their plan set up. It's a very high-volume area.
Correct.
They made the recommendation of that area to the lawn, to the side.
Correct.
And then to the, which is an outside location. And then at the elementary school, there was an inside, and it looked like from the literature we have in our packet that it was defined by the First Night Committee and all who have previously reviewed it. So my interpretation is you, you have permission to operate on both locations if you so choose, one inside and one outside.
We would love an opportunity for indoor location. Now we have to double check again with the committee to make sure that that's still is the case. But obviously, we want to be very much in line with what the requirements are.
All right, before we get into the really, really hard questions, I want, what are the cookies you're selling? What flavors?
So we're selling Thin Mints, peanut butter patties, peanut butter sandwich, lemonades, toastier, treefalls, adventure falls, and caramel delights.
Those sound wonderful. I have a funny feeling you're gonna get some donations from this board. You should have brought order sheets in, but, okay, seriously. Questions from the board? Shereen?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm looking at the location outside. I feel really bad that they're selling cookies outside. Why, I mean, I don't understand why they can't be inside.
It was explained that the space inside there was already at capacity, so they didn't have room inside is what I was, what was conveyed to me, so.
Okay, I.
I, I had the same, I had the same impression. I get it. I know it was, they're a little bit later into the request process. This is being a very high-traffic area for the community building. I understand, I understand what the position is. That's why I really want to make sure that the elementary school was in place because you definitely, as you know, First Night can have great weather or can have so, not so great weather. And an inside location is, is an absolute must for, so at least they have the one inside at the elementary school.
I also think it's a safety issue. I mean, this is, you know, this is outside, it gets dark at 4 o'clock and we're asking young children to be outside selling Girl Scout cookies. I just, I mean, if they can find space.
I'm open for discussion. Trust me. Dean?
I want to make it controversial, but that's.
I'm with Shereen on this. Now, the capacity issue, who determines that? Is that the First Night Committee? Is that the police department? Is that the fire department? I mean, it's our building. We can do what we want with it.
I reached out to both Deputy Director Amy Howell at the community center and the First Night Committee and this was the location they recommended, so.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest we reach out to the First Night Committee and see as how. They've asked us to commit our largess in terms of town's resources to please find a corner for a card table to be set up at the community center inside so the Girl Scouts can sell their cookies.
I'm fine with making approval conditioning that they try to work out an alternative, especially.
That's fine.
My biggest concern is, is the, I mean, weather and safety is, I mean, granted, it's, if it gets a little bit cold or wet, which it never rains on First Night.
Are there, are there First Night activities at the elementary school?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think unless the Girl Scouts want to be outside at the community center, I would support having them inside both buildings.
Yeah.
I mean.
We can throw in an alcohol permit if we want.
No, 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 no.
We're here at the Squire.
Be careful how you're quoted in the newspaper next week. Okay, I think the sentiment, I think we're all in the same sentiment. We want to provide opportunities for the, for the Girl Scouts. So I would suggest that we probably move these, condition them to hopefully even get an insourced, inside space to the community building, confirm that we have the indoor space to the elementary school and promote as much as possible for people to go out and buy Girl Scout cookies and wish them the best of luck. So would anyone entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I can't interrupt. We do have Chief Tavano on who has his hand up.
Chief, you cannot take an order online right now. Sorry.
You read my mind. I, I will say this is the first I've heard of this request. So we haven't weighed in on it and I agree. I certainly think that we can find a place indoors for the Girl Scouts. And in any way that I can assist, be happy to work with the First Night Committee to identify that spot. I do know the elementary school has some good entertainment planned and should have available space there, so I think that they'll get good traffic there.
All right.
Second. Would you like to vet Chief Tavano with following up and getting, securing the Girl Scouts an indoor spot at both the community center and the elementary school?
All right, second.
Second, and move approval of them being able to sell.
Both locations, okay. All those in favor, Selective?
Yes, can I hear what the motion is again?
I, I betted the responsibility in following up, finding the Girl Scouts indoor space at both the elementary school and the community center to Chief Tavano. And Joe, I mean, you know.
I think we should, I think we should just vote what we want.
Okay.
The chief is pretty confident.
They have, they have indoors, for discussion, they have indoor, okay, for the elementary school. I mean, probably set up a table right as you walk in the door, probably be an ideal spot, but.
Chief is confident that he can make this happen inside the community center. So I think that should be our vote rather than the motion that's on the table.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
All right.
And the second is withdrawn, so.
All right, new emo, new motion.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that the board approve the allowance of sales on town property for Chatham Girl Scouts for cookie booths at the elementary school and inside the community center on Sunday, December 31st, 2023, from 2:30 to 6:30 PM.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
You don't want to go to 11 o'clock, do you?
Boy, oh, boy, Dino. He's on fire tonight. Dino's on fire tonight. All right, all those in favor, Selective Member Castro.
Aye.
Selective Member Davis.
Aye.
Selective Member Dykens.
Aye.
Selective Member Shell.
Aye.
And Selective Member Metter says aye. Good luck, very much.
Sell lots of cookies.
Thank you!
Thank you, we appreciate the support.
All right, next. December holiday stroll, special one-day alcohol license compliance debrief and policy discussion. Let's start kicking off with the board. I know we have our, with Shawna Neely and our, and our chief present. Couple thoughts. For anyone who went down to the holiday stroll, the weather was perfect, you know, relatively speaking, for that time of year. Crowds were bountiful. I think all in all, it was a really good night. You know, a lot of people walking around town, enjoying themselves. But this is, this is the element of the job that we, you know, we get, we have to address as our responsibility. So for a holiday stroll, I think it was a good event. Nothing major happened, no accidents, no one got hurt, which is always a priority. There were a couple hiccups and there were a couple businesses that were presented, written, first offense letters that were issued to them, two, two of which were for just not having the one-day alcohol permit. So, you know, we, we made great, great strides in getting people to come into compliance with that element of it over the years because years ago, no one did it. And then we've slowly worked on that. The outreach this year has been tremendous. I mean, you guys have done the tour, we went to the merchants' associations, you've been before the board. So the message is getting out very clear right now. The other element that was of a compliance issue was having, I mean, basically the open containers as far as people going into establishments, leaving establishments with what is, which was, with open containers of, you know, beverages. And there was some concern about that element. So we also, you know, we're gonna talk about that. We're gonna talk about it if we want to decide on whether any of these individuals that got letters, we want to hold a public hearing and have any fines. I will get to my comments on that when we get to that. But I think one of the more important things is to look forward because I know we have a couple of policy discussion issues to deal with. The one that stands out greatly is, you know, when individuals come before this board, I think it's critical to have a representative either present in-house or online when we issue these permits. I think that is gonna have to become a requirement moving forward because it's the best way we can communicate. We're trying to work together collectively to have these fun events. And if someone is not present, there's a breakdown of communication from the get-go. So I think that is something we want to consider. You know, we can talk about other things about, you know, limiting how many one-days. I mean, I don't think, my mind, you know, we issued 13. You know, there's, the issues that were brought up and the violations that were presented over this past holiday stroll are all very, are all fixable items. They can, they can be addressed. There wasn't anything that really got out of hand, thank God. And I think we can, you know, continue with these, these type of events. Now, just on a side comment, I mean, you know, we make these decisions. We get criticized for being the no-fun police when we say we don't want to do this or we don't want to do that. We don't have the luxury of being so narrow-minded. We have to look out for what's in the best interest of the, of the public. And the public has different thoughts, different opinions, different priorities. And we have to somehow magically weigh all that. And at the end of the day, we got to figure out what is the best for the safety of the community, for the event, and anyone who is enjoying that evening. So I think all in all, it was a good event. I would love to get a debriefing from Chief and Shawna of what your perspective was. But I think this is something, we're definitely moving in the right direction, so.
I would agree. It was very well-attended. I don't think I've seen a crowd around the tree so big ever. It was just a swarm of people. So definitely a great event for the town, for the merchants downtown. I agree with, with Chair Metter's that we are making progress in. I agree with, with Chair Metters that we are making progress in bringing merchants into compliance when they have a special one-days or when they are contemplating serving alcohol to the public. So of the, we visited, I believe, all 13 stores that, that had licenses. We visited several that did not. So it was compliance checks, not just on those who did have a license, but on merchants in general. There only were six violations noted, which is, I think, pretty good compared to what may have been noted in the past when there weren't, where there was not one widespread, widespread compliance. And, and again, all of these issues are addressable. I think there are some easy fixes that we can recommend to merchants in the, in the future that would help them to operate in compliance with the regulations. There's certainly the option of the board to put in additional provisions within their local regulations, different requirements that could help, again, tighten things up in the future. But the only action really tonight that we're looking for is within the board's local regulations. As noted, we have only issued written warnings for first violations. We do have one business that may be in a second violation that would be determined at a public hearing, is really asking the board if you want to move that process forward to a public hearing to determine if there was a, a second violation and if a fine should be imposed. But happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shawna, I just had one question. There was a non-business that we gave a permit to. Were there any issues with respect to that? I don't want to name names.
I, none were observed by myself, or I don't believe any were reported by any of the officers downtown.
There were some fire concerns that were addressed very early on the setup process, and they were, they cooperated fully. There was no issues.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a follow-up to that particular question. Was that the entity located in a tent on the grounds of the Cape Cod Five?
Yes.
Thank you.
Specifically with respect to the one that is the issue for this evening and the possible public hearing, did the business in question have a one-day license for, for the evening of, of December's stroll?
Yes, for this year.
And, and secondly, was there some sort of a, a formal notification presented to the business that identified the conduct in question? I mean, the, the memo says was observed. Did somebody actually present them with something that called their attention to whatever the issue is?
That evening or follow, or following up? Mike?
Well, I, I would think it would need to be that evening, but at any point in time.
The answer to your question is no. There was no address to the specific business. The observations were made in the curtilage of the sidewalk in front of the business. There was no contact with the business owner.
So.
Written notification has since gone out to all six.
Well, but this is number seven, isn't it?
No.
Six.
Six.
Oh, this is within the six?
Correct.
I see. Oh, okay. Okay, so this is, which of the, is this one of the three or the two?
If, if, if I make it clear, when Shawna and I went out, we made notifications personally. This report was made by a patrol officer who made the observation and reported it to us, not the business owner.
Okay, but that still is in the three and two?
No.
No.
That's number.
So it is.
It's, it's the sixth.
It's the sixth.
Oh, okay, yeah, three and two is only five. Thank you. So was, was the conduct carrying something out or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And they've now, since then, been, been notified?
Yes.
Okay.
For, for what it's worth, because this, this past stroll, usually I'm working all night. I actually, I actually went out for the, I actually walked around more than I ever have in the past, and I only went to a handful of businesses. And I will have to say, from the few I did go into or walk by, there seemed to be clear intent for compliance. You know, they had, you know, a lot of places had things set up in a relatively reasonable manner. There were, were individuals monitoring the door, standing by the door, whether it be staff or, or you know, relationships of staff or hired folk or whatever. So there definitely was a sense of acknowledging this, you know, the, the outreach that was presented. They're taking it serious, and, and this happened. You know, I, we were kind of being, going around a little bit, but like on numbers to six, I totally recognize this is a second violation notification because of a operating under, without a license a few years prior. It was one establishment I went into, and I definitely know there was someone at the door who was trying to be the bouncer, door person, whatever. But it proves that you can't be there 24/7 and things can slip in or out. And, and that was one of the responses, I guess they, they gave after the fact is, you know, there's, there's drinks going around, so, or cups going around. So it's, you know, it's not the perfect scenario for this, for this, for this business. But I do think that, again, and I don't want to beat this phrase, you know, we've, we've kind of, kind of drawing a line in the sand. Like, we've gotten to this point. We're doing really well. Outreach, people moving forward with compliance for asking for these one-day alcohol licenses. You know, these offenses are not, you know, the one, the ones who got, didn't apply for one-day alcohol, they can fix that by applying next year for a one-day alcohol permit. You know, the, the issue of having containers coming in and out of businesses, that's something we need to button up, because it's for the benefit of everybody. I mean, I don't want to overplay this, but it's, it's something that can be fixed. And even those who had people watching the door, I think things slipped through. So you know, I think, you know, as far as these, for the first, the first-time offenses, I am not at all looking to hold a public hearing to, to find any of those. You know, the, the number six individual, we can have some further discussion, but I, I think we're heading really in the right place, so. Dean?
Just wanted to ask, with respect to number six, so a letter was sent. What did the letter say? Did it come from you, Shawna?
Yes, that, that an officer observed alcohol leaving the building.
It didn't specify any recourse or that the town might take or?
That the, that the board would be approached whether or not you
Okay.
wanted to hold a public hearing.
And have you had any response from that, in that establishment?
Yes. They have, they've outlined the steps that they took, and I've expressed appreciation for the steps that they did take to control the alcohol and to keep it within the store. It's really up to the board whether you want to hold the hearing in the first place and during the hearing determine whether or not you feel that a violation occurred. And if you do, then you could have the option of imposing the fine. If you don't feel that there was a violation, then you don't need to impose a fine.
Was that communication back to you in writing or was it oral?
We've received two emails and I've had one conversation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just to follow that up, do you have an opinion as to the adequacy of the procedures that they had in place to keep the, the alcohol in the, in the store?
I feel that they've made great attempts. I think that one of the questions that was asked here previously was about what if alcohol from another business entered your store and then was seen, someone was seen carrying that out? So I think that's another sort of educational piece that we can work with the merchants to say, really, you don't want someone walking in with a plastic cup that they got somewhere else, because if it's seen leaving your business, there's no way of saying that that did not come from your business.
Right.
So that's, that's another piece that we can certainly work towards firming up. And, you know, I think that's something that the merchants should understand that for their, for their constituents, they don't want anyone leaving, because it might wind up getting one of their other merchants in, in violation. So it's something they can work together.
Based on the report that you have, do, do you, is, is there some reason to think that the, the violation that we're talking about was a case of the, the alcohol coming from another place?
I, I don't know that.
We don't know. Okay.
Nope.
It sounds like this is all education and, and, and understanding and, and, and compliance at the end of the day. So I would say that, you know, this was a great first step for the town in, in working with the merchants. And the event was great. It was so well-attended and, and it was nicely done. I thought there was a lot of joy in town, which was really great to see. The concern is just the people that aren't complying or, you know, that aren't part of the process and aren't doing the right thing. And I think it's more, you know, serviceable to the, to the merchants and to the town of Chatham to be able to, you know, walk the street and educate people on what's going on and what their, what's the expectation is if they're going to participate in an event like this.
All right.
So, but you guys are looking for some direction tonight on that six?
Tonight, tonight, we're looking at one through five, if we want to hold a public hearing. Actually, one through six, but one through five are first, first-time offense, vendor, or notificat-, you know, the first violation notifications. Six has a, has two, one from 2021 and one from 2023 this year. So I think we're taking two separate steps. First, if, is there an appetite to hold a public hearing for one through five? Who received the first-time written notifications? Personally, I think we, the notifications are, are reminders of how, you know, significant they, they need to be serious about things. And I think many, and many of, honestly, they, 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 they were I guess, I'm not looking to hold a public hearing on one through five.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with that. I, I think that, I mean, unless there are special circumstances that you can identify, that people who are handing out alcohol without a license, in my view, are, are much more in the higher crime category, crime's a long word, but.
More weight.
Yeah, I mean, that's more serious to me than the fact that somebody got out the door with a cup of alcohol that, you know, where they were trying to keep it under control. If somebody's handing out alcohol and they don't have a license, what, what's the, what's the basis, what's the defense?
Well, I can say that the two businesses identified, one immediately removed the alcohol at request at notification that they don't have a license. I believe there was follow-up that that was, it was not returned to the business. The second was conducting more of a in-house party, but the door was open and we were welcomed into the establishment. When they were noticed that that was not permissible, that the public could not be, have access to their private event, they said, great, we'll close the door, no problem.
It was compliance.
Yeah, so it was compliance.
Okay, well, then, I, I, I mean, I, I agree with, with Corey as to one through five.
All right.
So do I.
I wanted to ask, the, the two establishments that we're talking about that served without a license, were they members of the Merchants Association such that they would have heard your presentation? Do we know?
I, I don't know who the membership is.
Okay, all right, we don't know.
Yeah, I.
Okay. You, you can have a private party with alcohol with the door closed.
The three conditions for a special one-day is if it's open to the public, if you advertise the event in any way, or if you are charging a fee. So you can certainly have a private cocktail party in your, in your business, as long as the, the general public's not welcomed in.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I agree with the chair and the vice chair. Before we, before we get too far, I did say, I was going to take public comment during this agenda, so I'll start with, is anyone from the public in-house would like to speak tonight? And since there's only one.
Perry Desolats, I'm representing my business, The Colors of Chatham, and the Merchants Association tonight. One of the things that Shawna said that happened to me during the stroll was I did have people come in with cups. And when they did come in with cups, I asked them to, you know, please finish it in here. You know, don't take it out the door. And some of them complied. And some of them didn't. They just told me, and they walked right out the door. So that is a, a difficult thing for us as merchants to control. I mean, I, I, I don't want to be the police officer again. I've been there. So I just, I just want you to consider that as, as like, you know, some of these people are getting violations because people are walking out the door. Boy, that was, and, and I, I didn't serve alcohol. I know better. So I, I just want to make you aware of that, that some people just, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna tell you, you know, they're not going to listen. So anyway, that, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe there's anyone online?
No.
No, all right. So first action is at least, I, business one through five. I think we're kind of on the same page. Someone entertain a motion for that?
Do we really need to take a motion or?
Are you fine with no action? All right, all right. Business number six.
I have a question about the 21 incident, the written warning.
Operating without a license.
So, but the, the infractions carry over year to year to year, and we have a history here. That, that's the point, I guess, the obvious point being made or what?
That's, again, the board's regulations, so it's the board's discretion.
So, so, and what is our regulation, Shawna, if I might, on, on this type of infraction? Thanks.
For violations, there's no indication within the regulations of any timeframe that the violations occur.
And our procedure for addressing violations and imposing a fine are what we, we'd hold a public hearing and we have an investigation, and then we'd come up with a fine, but there's no prescribed regulations that we abide by?
We do have penalties within the regulations. First offense is, we, we do have the ability to impose a fine of $125. Second offense, $250. Third and any subsequent, $500. But again, it's the board's discretion.
The first number was what, Shawna?
$125, but we've gone the route of written warnings for first offenses.
Thanks.
I just want to make sure I understood what you said in response to Jeff's first question. Are you saying that we could still enforce a penalty for the violation in 2021?
I, I don't believe at this time that would be appropriate, because there was a written warning issued in lieu of a fine for the first violation.
In 2022, did they get a license? Did they apply for a license?
2022, they did.
So they did do the right thing?
Mm-hmm.
And then they did the right thing again and applied for a license a third time? It's just that people were leaving and you explained earlier what transpired.
Correct.
Well, my, well, my thought, my thoughts really, I mean, in 2021, it was probably safe to say there were more than one or two businesses that were operating one day, without one day. So we've moved forward. We were getting more businesses to come forward, apply for the one-day, becoming compliant with the process. So I think I'm personally not going to hold the 2021 operation without a license over that business's head heavily. I think we're, you know, we're, we're getting above that. We're getting beyond that a little bit. And then from my own personal observation of being in the, in the, in the business, that shop, you know, I do think they were doing due diligence. I'm not, I do not want to disregard comments that were made earlier about having businesses, having patrons coming in with cups and leaving with cups. That's an element that we're probably going to have to focus more on for, for next year. And how do we, how do we educate? How do we, you know, minimize that element or how do we, you know, educate? You know, that's, but these are, these are things that we can all work through. These are, these were, were really making great strides in this process to have a nice, fun, safe event. So I think I am less inclined to hold a public hearing on, on the six business. It's in the record, and if there's a violation next year, then there's definitely, I think, some cause for, for a public hearing. But I, I am less inclined to hold them in a public hearing this year. Jeff?
I'm in agreement. Thank you.
Dean?
I'm in agreement with that, and I think that back in 2021, and, you know, I, I, I don't think enough people knew they had to have a license. They're not eating or drinking establishments, so they think it's the holiday, we'll serve a little wine. I think that's what happened, and now we've tightened things up. So I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm not interested in pursuing a public hearing. They received a warning. They corresponded back. They corresponded back.
Correct.
They understand.
I'm, I'm, I'm in principle in agreement, but can I just ask one question? Did the, the report that you received on this business, was it, they only observed one person leaving with alcohol or, or more than one?
It was one.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And the reason, I mean, the reason in some sense is obvious, but I, I think what Barry told us is something that you have to take into, into account. I mean, it, it may well be that somebody said, you can't leave, and they said, I'm leaving. Your problem. So I, and, and that's not an excuse exactly, but I, I think there is a point at which these would be things that, in fairness, we would have to explore in a public hearing. And I, and I really just don't think that, that it's, that it's worth it. I, I think we have elevated this to a level that makes the community, the, the commercial community aware, we're taking it seriously. We don't have to go the further step of creating the brouhaha of a public hearing and identifying a business and conducting a hearing and so on. So I'm in agreement.
If, if I could, I, I think what Mr. Desalitz also means is, I, I appreciate his comment when he doesn't want to be the police. There are other requirements in the licensing that you could opt to have a police officer at a certain location or certain locations, so, so we could be the police. I think it's, I think it's very difficult for the merchants. And they, and from what we saw, they did the best they could with, with acting as door persons for their, for their businesses. It's tough for them to say no. It's tough for them to impose a zero tolerance in and out. But I also think it's, it, it puts the police department in a little bit of a challenge if we're the ones that have to be burdened with the zero tolerance enforcement. The question hasn't been asked yet, but I'm sure the public is watching. We, we received only one complaint that I'm aware of from a citizen about, about the event. Just one that I'm aware of. And, and I think we're in agreement that I think it was addressed. But it, it just, we, we are very, very happy to do the education, the advisement, but when, but when we're, when we're put in a position where we have to go down the road to, to zero tolerance, I hate the ability to put my officers out there with less discretion than they have right now. And one of the comments that was made was, you know, well, well, what about the band concert? Well, what about the baseball games? Quite frankly, when, when we work the band concert, and I've worked hundreds of band concerts, do, do people bring alcohol to the band concerts? I'm sure they do. If they do, and there's a complaint, would we address and answer the complaint? Of course we would. Where we use the, the bylaws, and it almost reflects on the topic earlier this evening, I, I refer to the bylaws as, as, as really nice tools to have when it hits the fan because they address quality of life. And you, you hate to use zero tol, zero tolerance on quality of life issues because if that was the case, you couldn't talk loud on your deck at night. You, you couldn't play music on your, on, at your pool at night. So again, I appreciate the extra five minutes to opine here, but I think, I think there are additional requirements in your authority to, to assign detail officers if, if needed. But I, I think, I think that the complaints that we had, the complaint was addressed. From what I saw, from what Shauna and I saw, when we made our appearances, there was immediate compliance. They were doing the best they could, but it's, it's tough to stop everybody. And again, we did have people on the street that we encountered with open containers. We, we did not detain them, we did not stop and identify them because I didn't feel that that was appropriate. We just said, hey, look, it's not allowed, could you dump it out? And every single person that, that we encountered, you know, disposed of it immediately with no issue. And I, and again, I, I was looking, but I did not see any signs of intoxication, public intoxication. And then what we use as a, as a gauge, someone who's a, a danger to themselves or somebody else, I didn't see it.
I know, the chief and I both spoke with the one individual that did call in. We had a very lengthy, I think we either just had very lengthy conversations with the individual and very much respect their opinion and their thoughts. And, and I know there were some newspaper write-ups and whatever. And, 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 yeah, I did say, you know, could these events be successful without, without alcohol? Absolutely, I think they could be. These are gonna have alcohol, and, and I'm not looking to pull the plug on it myself. But I think we're, you know, we're, we're fine tuning the regulations, the process of getting, our process and policies, and just the educational and acceptance of having to do this in the, in the right way. I think we're all heading in the right direction, which is, and, and, I'm gonna agree for this too, but yes, we are, I am purposely not calling out each of the establishments that were, you know, that we're discussing tonight. I don't, you know, business one, two, three, four, five, and six. These are not egregious, you know, fine, or events that they had, their actions. You know, the fact that they got these letters themselves, I'm sure they weren't happy with it. But it's a, it's a learning, it's an educational element of moving forward. And we're in this, we're in this together. And I'm not looking to, you know, put, you know, be the Grinch at, at Christmas time. I think we, I think we're, I think we're doing the right thing. I think we're, we, the decisions we made tonight are correct. I do want to make sure that we don't lose sight of some policy discussions in a moment, but I do think we're, we're, we're doing the right thing tonight. Dean?
Yeah, just wanted to ask, what was the nature of the, the one complaint that came in? That just, they just didn't want to have alcohol at?
It was, it was a wide net of, of complaints that either were observed or perceived.
In the Oktoberfest, as I recall, there was just one complaint.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I, I'm certainly not interested in pursuing a hearing on number six, as I said earlier. I am, I would be interested, I guess you're gonna go into this, Mr. Chair, in asking Shauna and the chief to take a look at the regulations and perhaps come back to us if you think there's something we should do to fine tune the regulations. And I'm not sure what that is. You do in, in your, your memo to us say, we may wish to consider amending the regs to impose additional requirements on special one-day licensees. So I just throw that out.
If I may, some of the suggestions could be, as, as stated earlier, requiring the applicant to participate in the, the board meeting where, where the application's being heard.
I endorse that.
There could be some other physical, one thing that I, I noted and discussed with the chief was that the businesses had, that had violations of people leaving the building had their doors wide open, so it was very easy for somebody to walk out. And it might be a requirement that they just need to keep the door closed to make it that much more, if you have a cup in one hand and a shopping bag in the other, and you have to open a door, one's gotta go. That could be it.
I would encourage you to do that in conjunction with such discussions as might be advisable with the merchants as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, and to add to that, I mean, I think, you know, that, you know, we can talk about number of licenses. I don't think we've really reached a number that's unmanageable. The purse having an applicant, applicant representative is critical. I think that is probably what, like, the number one on our list. I think, I think it's worth discussion. I think maybe a filing deadline might be reasonable, especially for like the holiday stroll and for, you know, and Oktoberfest. So we have, okay, by this date, you need to have your application in just so we know how many one, you know, one days we're working with, so we know how to manage our resources. So I think things like that are all reasonable additions to our policies. All right. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, annual business license renewals. We have our license agent, actually, for C1, I'll make this really easy. I'm gonna step out of the room since two of the common Vic licenses are mine, so I'm gonna turn it over to our vice chair, select board show, and I'll be right back.
So we have.
Put your mic on, Mike.
All right, thank you. We have a list of businesses which hold common Vic jewelers, Vic jeweler Sunday dessert licenses that are due for renewal, have submitted renewal forms, have paid applicable fees, and are current on all local water and tax bills. I, oh, and then we also have another list of businesses that hold common Vic jeweler Sunday dessert licenses that are due for renewal but have not submitted renewal fee, forms or fees. And that, I think, oh, there's one further one which has such a license due for renewal, has submitted renewal forms or fees, but has outstanding personal property tax due. And the question is the approval of renewal of these. Shauna, do you want to give us any detail that we need to make that?
I will just note that the business that owed taxes has made good on that with the treasurer's office, so that's an update from today. And the other licenses, some of them are seasonal and generally don't renew for a couple of months. But we do not issue a license until the fees have been paid, so they, they, they know they can't operate unless they have their license, so.
So the bus, the one business that you mentioned, that goes in column one?
Yes.
And then, do you want to read the list, or do you want me to read the list?
I can.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Recommended to renew for the common Vic jeweler Sunday dessert license for 2024 would be Asian Paradise Restaurant, Brick Block Grill and Seafood, Brick Block Ice Cream and Crepes, Cape Ventures Inc., doing business as E-Mac and Bolios, Chatham Fish and Chips, Chatham Moods, Chatham Penny Candy Store, Chatham Perk, Chatham Perk on Main, Dent Donuts LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, Emma Bell's Cafe, Johnson Golf Management, doing business as Seaside Links Pro Shop, Susan and John Case Inc., doing business as Larry's PX, Marion's Pie Shop, Public Cafe, Short and Sweet, Snowy Owl Coffee Roasters, St. Christopher's Episcopal Church Grill, Sweet Dreams Ice Cream and Candy, The Corner Store, and The Bagel Dudes. And then conditionally approve upon submission of forms and fees. Carmine's, BRB of Chatham, doing business as Carmine's, Chatham Beach and Tennis, Chatham Cookware, Chatham Pier Fish Market, Lily's Diner, and Ridge Vale Beach Snack Bar. And I actually believe two of those have submitted, but approving them conditionally is fine.
The condition will be satisfied. Yeah, okay. Any questions or discussion?
I don't have any, but I was gonna make a motion.
I would welcome a motion.
Thank you. I move to approve the 2024 renewals of common, common Vic jeweler and Sunday dessert licenses as recommended by the licensing agent.
And the second.
Ah, good, all in favor? Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I do miss the days of the common Vic licenses being $5. They were for years, you know, for years. They're more in balance now. All right. Next, ends in lodging houses. In our packet, we have a list.
Just recommending the Old Harbor Inn be renewed as they have paid the fees and submitted their renewal application. Two conditional, one for Michael H. Pratt DBA Cul-de-sac Bed and Breakfast and Surfside Inn, Chatham LLC, doing business as the Surfside Inn. Again, I'm fine with the conditionals.
Questions for the board, comments?
Move approval.
Your second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, select for member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select for member Davis?
Aye.
Select for member Dot Dykens?
Aye.
Select for member Shell?
Aye.
And select for member Metter says aye.
And all four lodging houses are in compliance, having paid their fees and submitted their applications, renewal applications. They're up to date on water and tax bills. That's 1547 Main LLC, which may be more commonly known as the former Master Mariner property, Colonial Building LLC, JG ALT LLC, which is more commonly known as the Harding House, and the Aquacent Inn Housing at the Cove.
Questions or comments on the board?
Move approval.
Your second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, select for member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select for member Davis?
Aye.
Select for member Dykens?
Aye.
Select for member Shell?
Aye.
And select for member Metter says aye. Next, we have entertainment, automatic amusement, and movie theater renewals.
All straightforward, Backpack Forever LLC, doing business as Mom and Pops, Blue Fin Sushi and Saki Bar Inc., doing business as Blue Fin's, Brown James Buck Memorial Association Inc., which is the VFW, Chatham Drama Guild, JJG Chatham Inc., doing business as Delmar Bar and Bistro, One Drop Operating LLC, doing business as the Chatham Squire, Peter J. Higgins, doing business as Dogfish Taco Company, Pizza Shark Inc., Red Boy Inc., doing business as the Red Nun, Scorpios Enterprises Inc., doing business as Knots Landing Bar and Grill, and TPJ Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Pates Restaurant.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, select for member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select for member Davis?
Aye.
Select for member Dykens?
Aye.
Select for member Shell?
Aye.
And select for member Metter says aye.
Moving on to automatic amusements, which are video games, pinball machines, pool tables, et cetera, One Drop Operating LLC, DBA the Chatham Squire, Brown James Buck Memorial Association Inc., the VFW, and Red Boy Inc., doing business as the Red Nun.
Your second, or?
Move approval.
Move approval, second.
Second.
All those in favor, select for member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select for member Davis?
Aye.
Select for member Dykens?
Aye.
Select for member Shell?
Aye.
And select for member Metter says aye. And then movie, movie theater licenses?
Chatham Morpheum Theater.
We can all guess who that one is.
Move approval is second.
Second.
Okay, select for member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select for member Davis?
Aye.
Select for member Dykens?
Aye.
Select for member Shell?
Aye.
And select for member Metter says aye.
Moving on to class one, two, and three auto dealer renewals. Class one is for the sale of new vehicles, and that would be Mattern Motor Group, doing business as Chatham Ford.
entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Aye. Oh, second.
Select for member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select for member Davis?
Aye.
Select for member Dykens?
Aye.
Select for member Shell?
Aye.
And select for member Metter says aye.
Class two auto sales are for the sale of used vehicles. We have Chris Wentworth Auto Sales, Clark's Auto Services Inc., which is restricted to 10, 10 cars for resale. IHS Enterprises Wareham Inc., doing business as North Chatham Savon, which is restricted to six cars for resale. Not interfering with the corner sight lines there at their property. Kelsey's Auto Rental Inc., Paul Jenkins and Sons Inc., doing business at Chatham Antique and Classic Auto. Those are straightforward. Cape Auto Brokers, we just are lacking a signed renewal form, so that would be a conditional approval.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay, select for member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select for member Davis?
Aye.
Select for member Dykens?
Aye.
Select for member Shell?
Aye.
And select for member Metter says aye.
And for class three, which is for junk auto dealers allows the buying and selling of cars and trucks for parts and salvage, that would be for Clark's Auto Service Inc., condition that the fence installed in compliance with mass general laws and all salvage and recycling materials are, and vehicles are located behind the fence.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, select for member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select for member Davis?
Aye.
Select for member Dykens?
Aye.
Select for member Shell?
Aye.
And select for member Metter says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Consider the date and time for our 2024 Annual Town Meeting. I shall turn it over to Jill for clarification on the calendar markup.
Sure, so as you know, the, the town had approved a bylaw change that the select board, by December 31st of the year, to set the date for the annual town meeting on a date other than the second Monday of the month, which is allowed in May and other dates that we have, including the Saturday. So before you is a list of suggested dates that we have cleared with the school department for a reservation of the entire complex, basically at the Chatham Intermediate School. for a reservation of the entire complex, basically at the Chatham Intermediate School. We have Saturday, May 11th, we have Monday, May 13th, 2024, that would have been the date, had we not amended the bylaw to provide for some flexibility, and then Saturday, May 18th, 2024. The May 11th one is, on Saturday, is the day before Mother's Day, so I just want to put that out there, that's on Sunday, the 12th, and also for the board tonight to consider the time, in addition to date, to call the town meeting.
All right. General thoughts? Anyone?
I, I guess the first question is Saturday versus Monday. I, I, when we did Saturday last year, a lot of people complained that it should have been Monday, or it should have been a weekday. I did hear some complaints about the special town meeting on Monday evening. The special town meeting, granted, the, the issue brought a lot of people out, but it was the largest turnout that we'd ever had. I, I guess I would be, subject to better thoughts from my colleagues, I would be, I think, slightly inclined to, to go with a Monday, 6 o'clock type of approach again.
Well, the one thing I can guarantee you, no matter what we pick, someone's not going to like it, that's, that's very known. I'm actually, I actually prefer to go back to a Monday and see how it goes. You know, I would, I'm going to argue for a slightly earlier start, but I'm, I'm more inclined to go to Monday myself. Dean?
I am too, and I think really what drives the crowd is the issue, as Mr. Shell just said. And, I mean, I'm not wedded to it, if the sentiment is to go for Saturday, I can live with that, we, we had a communication from the town moderator expressing an interest in a Saturday, I guess a preference for Saturday, but he obviously indicated he would abide by whatever we decide. So, those are my thoughts on it.
Yeah, we tried Saturday, it wasn't overwhelming, I mean, I don't think we got an overwhelming response, and it's favor, if you will, to argue for it, so I'm good with Monday as well, and you're absolutely correct, the issue is bring the people out, but I'm willing to go back to Monday as well.
Yes. Shereen?
And I think the last two elections we have, I mean, town meetings we've had, we've had issue, you know, controversial issues, and so I don't think it's a good gauge, but I, I'm willing to go back to Monday to see how it goes, and, you know, barring any, any big, big deal, I think we'd be fine with Monday, we can reassess it another year.
Agreed, agreed. Now, more important, time.
Can, can, I mean--
If, if we were to go Monday, what time?
Yeah, no, I understand, and I, having, I think we have a sentiment, we, we have a consensus around a Monday, I'll, I'll stop there. Time, I, I have this sense, from what I've heard, which is obviously limited input, that, you know, anything earlier than 5:30 or 6:00 begins to bite into working folks' opportunity, et cetera, et cetera, as well as, has an effect on, on childcare, I, I, I don't know exactly how, but I, I think trying to get it too much earlier is, is, it begins to erode the benefit of, of a weekday, but I'll stop there.
I, I argue for 6:00. I guess folks that work to 4:30 or 5:00, time to get there, if they're of Chatham, I mean, I would argue for 6:00.
I'm for 6:00, and if we have a long warrant, we go into a second night, where the moderator keeps us there till 11:00, and we get it done, but he can make that determination, but I'm for the, for 6:00 start time, and you're going to want to know which date to, which date.
Right, we're going to know the date and time. I'm just going to throw 5:30, my preference is, and this is my argument, and this is, I want to be careful how I phrase this. We get the town meeting open, pleasure of allegiance, all the protocol to start the meeting, some of the first articles are kind of standard articles, so we're kind of rolling into it. I don't know if 5:30 gives us a little bit of leeway at the end, because the childcare is more concerning than when it gets later in the evening. You know, it's, there's going to be no ideal time, but I just wonder if 5:30 gives us a little bit of wiggle room, so that if we do a three, three and a half hour meeting, you know, we get a couple of things, kind of the standard items kind of rolling in the beginning, and people get there 5:30, 5:45, they have a little bit of wiggle room if they can't make it for the kickoff of the meeting.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I guess in response to that, I would say, I'm not sure the average person really looks at that, they're going to see 6:00 or 5:30, and if they see 5:30, they're going to say, oh, that's just too early for me, I'm not going to show up at all, or they might, that might be the reaction of some people, so I'm not sure, but I know what you're saying. You know, and people do, you know, come in as those protocols, those early, those sort of preliminaries are, are being transacted, but I'm not sure it gives you a whole lot.
And we'll have childcare for ages three and above, no matter what time town meeting starts.
Okay. I'm going to draw, you know, draw on a sword for this one, 5:30, 6:00, but I think 6:00 on Monday, the 13th, is kind of where we're landing.
You mean, Monday, the 13th, yeah.
Sounds good. Take a vote. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, and Jill will tell me if I'm leaving anything out on this, I move that we hold the annual town meeting for 2024 on Monday, May 13th, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM, at the Monomoy Regional Middle, Middle School.
Okay, second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, select board member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Shell?
Aye.
And select board member Metter says aye. Last item on our agenda, town manager's report and monthly report for November.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we have our usual reports of our employee longevity and anniversary dates, and to top it off, we have Stuart Smith as our harbor master for 39 years, Ted Keon, also in our natural resources department, as our coastal resources director for 26 years, two members from our DPW, Dave Laurie is a heavy equipment operator, has been here for 21 years, and Jerry Friend, who's a heavy equipment operator as well, has been here for 19 years, and Sarah Clark, our central permitting planner, for 16 years, and the remainder have been here eight years or less, starting with Christina Bassett, who's our department coordinator for community development, all the way down to Amy Howe, who's our deputy director of community services for recreation and beaches. We also welcomed a new hire to our community center, it's our recreation assistant, and he is Kaden Quinn. He has basically had a lifetime of being a participant in recreation and a, and a strong advocate as a lifeguard, swim instructor, beach supervisor, recently came to us from the town of Harwich, so we're very excited to have him with us. We have our December retirements, unfortunately, I, I report one every month, it's always bittersweet, we have John Whittle, he's been a longtime police officer with us for 36 years, we're doing a last coffee with Officer Whittle on Friday, December 29th, from 8:30 AM until 10:00 AM at the Chatham Police Department. Recruitment and job postings are ongoing, and those are listed and updated online, and then as select, select person Dykens had mentioned, Chatham TV has been very active with their productions, so must-see TV, I called it, we have a Department of Public Work series backstage, and that was with the DPW director, Tom Barr, on Drinking Water Wells 10 and 11. We've also have gone to a, a really cool TV show called Flash TV, and that's the Flash newsletter, our council on aging newsletter, with our new communications and program coordinator for the COA, and they've done a great job, and it's, it's a really cool format where Anna is interviewing either a resident or a volunteer, or, or anyone, a participant at COA, so it's kind of a how they got here to Chatham, and it's really interesting. And then, I think as equally as interesting is our various public information sessions that we just held, one at the, for the Stage Harbor Morris Island Floodgate presentation and input session, so all of those are available on our, our website, you can grab them, or through the town's YouTube channel, and there's a lot of other programming. I also included a calendar of just getting into our legislative session as the town, so we're working to get first, the annual town report, that's for 2023, that's due to Kathy by the 31st of January, so we can get it published and available and uploaded, as well as hard copies as soon as possible, and it's close to town meeting. And then we'll begin our annual town meeting warrant, just last Friday, the fiscal articles were due to our office, so we're working through that to get a total financial picture, and also the non-fiscal articles are, are not due until February 15th, but surely have them to us as soon as possible. And then suggested deadline for citizen petition articles is March 12th, they actually can be provided up until the warrant is posted, but we encourage applicants, or I'm sorry, petitioners to come in and to our office directly for any guidance, including if there's town council guidance, and so we can get these before the select board and fin comp to vote an opinion before the town meeting warrant is published. And we're anticipating the closing of the town meeting warrant on March 19th, so it's coming up soon, so you'll be very busy through January, February, and March, and then just various posting deadlines, we used it for pre-planning purposes, so we want to get the warrant posted by April 26, and hopefully in the hands of all the residents, as we do mail it per household, and our annual town meeting, as you just said, tonight for May 13th, so the election will be within eight days following the May 13th annual town meeting, I just need to get that confirmation with the town clerk, and then you'll sign a separate warrant for that town election. And the remainder of my current report just has ways for residents or anyone to become connected, and notifications to sign up for, and also we have the monthly report for November from all of the departments, so interesting information, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for the board? Shereen?
Thanks, Jill. The report is really good, and I agreed with Ms. Gibbs that we should be including the sewer stuff that, that she had--
And it's, we're working on that.
That's great, and I know we've had a new, a transition here into a new department to do that, so I understand there may be a delay. I just wanted to dig deeper into your, into the, into the report a little more, it's like, I really have been enjoying reading the main sheet, and I think that the communications, coordination stuff from Shawna is really, we've stepped our game up in Chatham, and it's really, I think the information coming forward is really cool. One of the things I wanted to know is, how many people have, have signed up on, for the emails, and, you know, how are we doing on Facebook?
Sure. So, direct subscriptions for the main sheet, which they're emailed right to people's inboxes, we have 1,322 subscribers for that direct, direct subscriptions. It's also shared on our Facebook page, which has 2,199 followers at this point, and on our LinkedIn, which I did not check today to see how many subscribers we have.
Thank you so much.
Dean?
Yeah, a couple of things, I agree with Shereen regarding the request that Elaine Gibbs made, she and I had had a conversation about that, and Rob Failey is very, if he's the one that's going to do this, he's very good at aligning things with matrices and columns, and maybe he can report that same data in an easier fashion to read, because it was kind of disparate, the way it was presented previously, from phase to phase.
Yes, yes.
Secondly, I guess I wanted to ask, and a great, great report as usual, so we have, the select board has until March 19th to place our items, articles on the warrant?
Yes, that's the suggested deadline, so that we can get it to the printer--
Okay.
--by March 22nd.
And I appreciated the quick response from your office, Jill and Shawna, last week regarding the main sheet. Shawna, don't go, I have one question.
Dark.
Regarding inviting questions to the town manager, and I was just wondering if we had had any submitted?
We've included it in the last two additions, I believe, we have not had any submissions yet.
All right, and that was not my, that didn't originate with me, it originated with a citizen, and I don't think he'll mind my mentioning his name, was David Mott, suggested to me, and I went down to your office immediately, because we had the meeting, I had met with him in town offices, and you, you and Shawna responded quite favorably, so hopefully citizens will take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other thoughts for the night? No, good report, thank you. Before we have our motion to adjourn, just a reminder, we are not scheduled to meet next Tu, uh, next Tuesday, so it'll be next year, January 2nd, we're scheduled for our next select board meeting, so in the meantime, I hope everyone has a happy holiday and a safe and happy new year, and I'll entertain one last motion tonight.
I'll move to adjourn.
We're here a second. All those in favor, select board member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Merry Christmas, Chatham, aye.
Select board member Shell?
Yeah, ditto, aye.
And select board member Metter says aye. Good night, everyone.